I'd like to call the meeting to order. Ms. Burns, roll call.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Feather?
Here.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Ms. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Boyle?
Here.
Ms. Hollenbach?
Here.
Mr. Kovitz?
Here.
Mr. Merrington?
Here.
Mr. Parentana?
Here.
Quorum is present.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board met in executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters of employment and litigation. The district mission statement. The Nishamity community builds futures by empowering each child to become a productive citizen and a lifelong learner. Ms. Burns, any announcements?
No announcements.
Superintendent, Mr. Board, Mr. Jones?
Good evening, everyone. Just flurries today. No snow. That was good. The artwork here, each month, we... The rotating art gallery changes, and so for this month, we have our Schweitzer Elementary School. We thank Ms. Todd for working with our students to bring out an example of the creativity there, and great work from our elementary school students. Snow days, five snow days this year. When I... My first year as a high school principal, way back in the early 90s, we had 13 days. Do you remember that? It was ice. You'd walk out your door, and you'd slide right down your driveway 13 times. We were closed that school year. So five's probably the most in a long time for me. We're making up the proposed draft calendar in front of the board tonight, and then it'll be acted on at the next meeting. Is one additional school day. We're gonna finish out the week in June so that we have a full week. We'll shift our half-days, so we'll gain a full day back of the instruction. And then there's gonna be four staff development days, professional development days for our teachers, necessary work to be done on the professional development front, but also, we're doing some important ALIS, what's called ALIS training. It's a program for school safety, and it'll be a good opportunity for us to have all of our teachers and support staff involved in training that'll get everybody onto the same page. So we're... Actually, that has been a benefit of the shifts in the days. I wanna highlight a couple of fun things that are happening always at the elementary school. And so, there's a note about the reading challenge at Buck Elementary that ended up with the principal and Mr. Nesbit taped to the wall. All of the students had duct tape because of the books that they read, and great video and great pictures on our Facebook of the two of the gentlemen as they pull the chair out from underneath and see if they actually stay. And they both did stick. Also, out of Buck, it's just kinda nice to see how technology impacts and changes education today. Ms. Smith's third-grade class at Pearl Buck Elementary was excited to have an author and scientist, Ms. Teagan, visit them via Skype. And so, today, we're able to bring people, and our students can connect via the internet. And so, we had an exchange with the author right in the classroom, all because of the technology available and afforded to kids here. And so, that was a nice example. Fertabar using technology. Instead of Redbox, they have Readbox, and you can go up with your technology device and do a QR scan, and then you get a book based off of the Readbox that they have there. Again, a little bit of fun with technology, makes it exciting for our students. An Art Mobile visit, thanks to the art teacher at Miller. We connected with the Bucks County Community College Art Mobile, visiting the Millers campus parked outside, and our students were able to access some additional opportunities to view some art. Both Miller and Tewanka were in my report, but all of our elementary schools participated in the Read Across America Week. Miller just so happened to make it because we happened to be visiting that day, and our Crazy Hat Day, and some nice pictures of that made it into the Facebook. But I thought Tewanka's was nice to point out that we engaged with our community librarians, and also, we had our high school students come down to Tewanka to participate in the reading to the students. And so, that was a nice cross-age activity. High school jazz ensemble, congratulations to the high school jazz ensemble who performed at the New Hope Salisbury Jazz Festival recently and earned outstanding rating section awards for best saxophones and best trombones. Honorable mention went to vocalist Hannah de Mimiyo. Soloist metal performer to Mia Price on Vibes, and soloist metal performance to saxophonist Riley Hastings. For this month, we... Or last month, we build futures awards. People in our district being recognized for supporting the district's mission statement or helping us advance our strategic plan. I can see we have somebody in the audience who received one of our words earlier. But for the last month, Janet Aguilar, nurse at Miller Elementary, Neil French, teacher here, seventh-grade teacher and student council advisor and coach here at Maple Point, Peggy Gale, school counselor, Maple Point, Linda Hyjeric, second-grade teacher at Miller, Patty Jackson, fourth-grade teacher at Hoover, Adam Lawrence, librarian at the Pequeston Middle School, Ruth Moat, instructional assistant at Fertabar, and Todd Perry, who's a data manager here at our district offices. So we thank them. They're all exemplary individuals who, along with a lot of colleagues, help us do the good work that we do for all of our kids each and every day, and we thank them. And finally, I have a reference here in the report where I'm saying extra thanks to our custodial, our maintenance staff, our transportation department for the extra hard work that occurs on these snow days. Some in our community wake up and look outside the window and cheer. Not these people, because they all work on that day, and they work really hard, and I thank them. Some phenomenal work. That last snowfall was a heavy, heavy snowfall. And even though we were closed the next day for a variety of reasons, and mainly because of the community here, most people were without power, our school facilities looked good. We really... Late, late snowfall, a lot of snow coming down really fast, and a lot of people did a lot of hard work, and I thank them, and we're very appreciative of the work that they do for us each and every day, but certainly on those extra hard days. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. You will notice on board docs this month, there's a presentation by Director of Pupil Services, Anthony Devlin. So, at your leisure, you can look at that report. And tonight, we have a presentation on the Nishamity Buck Senior Experience, and I think that'll be led by David Jeanette.
Good evening. We have over 60 high school students participating in the Bucks County Community College Partnership Senior Year Experience. By the end of the school year, these seniors will have earned 12 credits, three in English Composition, three in Humanities, Social Studies, and six of their choosing. From my communications and Dr. McGee's communications with many of them, they've been pleased with the experience and would recommend it to our current juniors as we take steps to expand the program next year. Tonight, we have two students, Ahone Akume and Brian O'Connell, who will share their thoughts about their experience, how the Bucks program has helped them to prepare for life after high school, what surprised them about the college setting, and anything else that they would like to share. We'll start with Ahone.
Hello and good evening, everyone. My name is Ahone Akume, but people commonly refer to me as Gina, and I'm 17 years old, and I am a senior at Nishamity High School. And I actively participate in the Bucks Dual Enrollment Program. At the high school, I take AP Bio, Calculus, and Graphic Design, as well as gym, which is a requirement. And... And last semester, during the fall semester, I took Intro, I mean, English Composition, and I also took medical terminology. And this semester, I take Stress Management, as well as Intro to Psych. I've had a lot of fun at this program, and I'll admit, it's very helpful for the future, financially and mentally and emotionally and socially. Financially, because we all know college is a lot of money these days, a lot of money. And for my family, money's tough. For example, my older sister's in college right now. She's in her second year, and she's out of state. And four years ago, my dad lost his job. So financially, they both are big impacts on our lives. And the Bucks program, as you heard, can give us credits that we can use when we go to college in the future. Like, for me, I plan to go to New York for college, once I graduate. And having these credits now can save me a bunch of money in the future, so I don't come out of college with so many loans on my back as I go out into the world. Also, mentally, if you couldn't tell, talking is not one of my strong points, socially or in general. I don't really enjoy speaking all that much, especially to crowds, but something like this needs to be told to you who don't know anything about the program besides Dr. McGee and other people within the school. So going to Bucks really opened me up a bit more than I was compared to last year. Socially, like, they don't care if you're in high school or if you're like the older-than-average college student. For example, they didn't know that we were high school students when we first started. The first day of English Composition, we did icebreakers to try and get to know one person in our class. And because they said, "Say something you don't, the other person probably won't know", I told her I was a high school... I was still in high school. And then when he told her professor, she looked as if she was... Her jaw was about to drop on the ground. She didn't... They told them that there were high school students coming, but they didn't tell the specific teachers. My medical terminology teacher didn't know until halfway through the semester, when I was talking to her after class, and said, "I have to go catch the bus." And she said, "The sub of us?", and I said, "No, the school bus." And she, too, was shocked. She didn't expect that. But still, they treat us the same as any other college student. They expect you to work hard and maintain your grades. There's no babying, and that's good for preparation for the future, where you can't go into life thinking that everything's going to be handed to you, or that someone's going to be there to push you. Maybe your parents will be, but in the future, you have to rely on yourself to go far in the world. And I wanna thank you all for making it possible for us to do this program. It's opened my eyes and given me a perspective that I probably wouldn't have realized until I was in college myself, like, next year. But early experience never hurts anyone, and as they say, the early bird always catches the worm. Thank you.
Need a longer one of these. Hi, my name's Brian O'Connell. I'm also a senior at Nishamity High School, and I'm also a member of the Dual Enrollment Program. Currently at the high school, I'm taking Drama, Select Choir, and Finance and Investment classes, and also gym, which, yes, is a requirement. At Bucks, I'm also... Last semester, I took Psychology and Language Arts, which mainly focused on composition and writing essays. This semester, I'm taking Macroeconomics and an honors Effective Speaking class. Over the course of the past two semesters, I think the main thing that the program has taught me is time management, which, as I'm going to college for Electrical Engineering, which everybody just tells me is so much, is super time-intensive. I think that learning time management early on in college is something that will be really helpful for the future. I've also learned that I need to expect that I'm gonna have more responsibility in college, because in high school, I wouldn't say everything's handed to you, but you're never afraid to ask a teacher for help or to stay after class or to stay after for extra help. In college, I mean, they have office hours, but for the most part, you're on your own, unless you get help from other classmates with things. So it's just really taught me that I'm gonna have a lot more on my plate with college. One thing that I actually didn't expect with my classes is that it actually taught me, there are all these super helpful websites and resources. A lot of times, college websites will actually have online resources that are associated with the schools, then they have memberships. And these websites, I'm gonna remember for when I have future classes, so I can use them to help me be more efficient in my work and just make everything easier for me. It's also been really good practice for college in the sense that, like I've said, we have more responsibility, and it's really like you have a fresh slate. You don't really know anybody there. I mean, there are some Nishamity people at Bucks, which it's always cool to see people that graduated last year that I'm friends with. But for the most part, you're on your own, and you need to learn more social skills, how to talk to people, how to talk to your professors, and somebody that's mature and a position of authority. And really, just how to handle the workload with the time management like before. It's also really taught me to be independent, as I need to drive myself all the way to Bucks. I need to wake up, like, I need to start leaving my house like 45 minutes before just to get there on time with the morning rush hour. And it's just teaching all this independence. I have to go... I had to go get my parking pass on my own. I have to really just do, deal with everything on my own. And I think that's something that's really important as I continue my college career. Another thing that I really appreciate about this program is it really just gave me a head start on college. My family is also really tight on money, and just to have these free credits ahead of time is a godsend. It's really super awesome for the future, and just knowing that I have these credits knocked out and I have less things I have to stress about. Yeah, overall, I'm just really thankful for this program and the opportunities it's given to me. Thank you.
Well, Gina and Brian, I have to tell you, the Dr. McGee was supposed to be here, but he is an administrator now responsible for some students who are at a Council Rock South? Is that where they're at? Playing in a playoff game. So I said to him, "Are you sure your students are gonna be okay without you?" And he said, "Trust me, they're gonna be fine." And he was right. He knows you well, I guess, because you both did phenomenally. To be able to describe that experience the way that you did was exactly what we were hoping for, so that the board and the public could hear about this unique opportunity. I have to thank Dr. McGee. I mean, Dave Jeanette has provided good district leadership, but in the building, Dr. McGee really has been the point person for our pilot program. He took this from the beginning to the end. He worked with each of those students to make sure that we could have a schedule that could work for them. It was a lot of extra work, a lot of unique situations developed, and he was able to really masterfully make this work for as many of our students as possible. I also like to thank Marlene Barlow, who is the Admissions Director at the Community College at Bucks. She was our point person. We had the top person supporting us, and she stayed with us right from beginning to end, emailing Dr. McGee through the weekend when necessary. She really looked out for our kids like they were her own, and it made this pilot that much more successful. I also like to point out that this is a real point of difference from Nishamity. There is no other school in Bucks County that's doing this. The Bucks County Community College knows Nishamity. They know that we're looking for opportunities for our students to do unique and challenging, rigorous work. Obviously, our students are ready for this, and this is a great transitional opportunity for them to be prepared for college. You can see from the two representative cases here just exactly how much more ready they're gonna be when they step foot on college for the first time officially as a full-time student. But getting that parking pass is probably just as meaningful as sitting and getting through some of those college courses, because it's gonna put you in a position, Brian and you, Gina. Wonderful job, both of you. Public speaking skills, very impressive. And I thank you for coming out tonight and sharing your story. Thank you. I did say, this is often when I tell the students, this is a good time to get home and take care of all that homework, especially the college coursework. So you're welcome to stay for the meeting, but if you need to get home, thank you so much.
And that brings us to the public comment section. Ms. Burns? No speakers. Guess I'll have to tell them the limit to three minutes. Then, moving on, that brings us to the second item, items for approval at the public meeting. We will be at the March 27th board meeting. We will be looking at bid approvals, budget transfers, the revised 2017 to 18 school calendar with 2018 graduation date. Then the Shaminie School District Virtual Academy, summer programs, the 2018 proposal, homebound instruction. The First Reading of Board Policy 700. The Bucks County Technical School Articles of Agreement. Acceptance of a donation, an overnight trip. Sunday facility usage. And that's it. Anyone have any items they want to discuss on those items? Anyone want to provide clarification on any of those items, maybe the Articles of Agreement?
Mr. President, I was unavailable at the last meeting, so I'm going to defer to Cindy and Adam, who were present for that meeting, to fill us in on the latest. I was gonna wait till our board comment, but it's a good time to talk about the articles.
All right, so basically, we met on February 26th. The board discussed, and we agreed on the article revisions. Some highlights. We are going to change board representation, the amount of people each board has represented. Also, the... What everybody is contributing, seats are staying the same. So there were some critical changes, but overall, everything went well and everybody agreed on it. The other updates, I'll save for when we talk about the committee, but that was basically it. But everybody was able to agree on it, and we will be voting on it during the upcoming meetings.
Just to add a little clarity, there are six districts that take part in administering these Articles of Agreement for the Bucks County Technical High School. And the initial agreement that was set up is due to run out, I believe, August. So it behooves all of us to come together, come up with the agreement, and provided everything's approved unilaterally by all six districts, then we get to move forward with an operating Bucks... Operating Technical High School. So interesting conversations going on with that.
Committee reports. Business operations, Ms. Hollenbach?
Our next meeting is scheduled for next Wednesday at 6:30 here in the conference room. It's about how we're dealing with our insurance. We went out to bid to see if it's worth it to change some of our insurance around, and we're gonna get the results of that next Wednesday. So everybody is welcome, 6:30 here. Thank you.
Our last educational development meeting, we discussed the district-wide academic initiatives for fiscal year 1819, and our next meeting will be determined. And I guess I could go on to policy. Okay. Our next meeting is going to be on the 19th here in the boardroom, 6:30. We're going to review the PSBA 200 series. And the IU is going to meet on the 20th, and there's going to be a reception of... An exhibit of all the student art in the area. That's in Doylestown at 7 o'clock. Actually, if you wanna go to the reception and see the student art, that starts at 5.
On Tuesday, March 6th, the Nishamity Education Foundation held its first Alumni Committee meeting here at Maple Point. Due to the last impending storm, which started the following morning, turnout was limited, but those that did attend had some great ideas about how to build interest in the committee and some possible projects to get things started. These ideas included an Alumni Wall of Fame at Nishamity High School and an Alumni of the Year Ceremony, regular alumni gatherings at local restaurants, and the identification of a small project at the District for a Possible Alumni Capital Fund Campaign. The group will meet again in late April or May to begin bringing these ideas to reality. The regular monthly meeting was held on Monday, March 12th. Among the items discussed was the upcoming Benefit Harlem Wizards game, scheduled for Saturday, April 14th at 7:00 PM at Nishamity High School. Tickets are only $10 and available online at www.harlemwizards.com. Students and adult volunteers are needed. Please contact any board member for more information on how to help out with this fun, family-friendly event. The Spring Basket Raffle will begin within a couple of weeks. Tickets will be sold at each school building and at the Wizards game, and the baskets will each contain valuable restaurant cards and other cards that have been generously donated by local businesses. The next monthly meeting will be held on Monday, April 9th, 4:00 PM at Maple Point. Anyone interested in joining the foundation or helping with the Alumni Committee is welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. PSBA liaison?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Recently, the PSBA has updated their website. They have a new site called PSBA Live. It's an active site. All school board members should have received an email within the last few weeks giving you a username and password, so you could log into that site. If you have not gotten it, you can contact the superintendent's office, and they'll help you get with the PSBA to get your username access. We are Section 8 of the PSBA. We have new leadership. They recently announced that there will be an Educational School Leadership Conference in October 17th to 19th of this year. More details to follow. All school board members are invited to attend. You do have to make reservations through the superintendent's office. You'd have to contact the superintendent's office for those reservations. Other than that, on the legislative front, the big topic is currently Senate Bill 2. I don't know if the public is aware. This bill keeps getting recycled and changed as time goes on. Currently, it's now tailored as a voucher-type program for just underperforming schools. Many districts, it's been in the news and the newspaper, have joined a passing motions while they're non-binding. They just have the intent of letting the legislature know that, you know, the public school system cannot continue to constantly be split into pieces. The funding is hard enough. There's, of course, a big contingency out there for... Or, excuse me, constituent base out there for, you know, voucher program for private and/or non-public schools. I need to bring this issue up at a later date. We would have to decide how we wanna proceed. But as individuals, you can contact your legislatures and let them know how you feel about Senate Bill 2. I feel it will continue to deteriorate the stable funding that we're trying to hold on to with just our fingernails, it seems like, at times. And to cut it even more is really gonna, you know, force districts to, you know, either more taxes, more revenue, or you're gonna have to cut places. You just can't keep cutting up that slice of pie. So hopefully, that measure will be stopped, and I wish they would bring up measures to deal with the actual issues that we deal with on a day-to-day basis instead of the issues that are trying to expand a system with no other funding. So that's all I have for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, tech board?
Yeah, I'll take this opportunity to go a little more into detail with the changes that are proposed for the summary. Draw your attention to the attachment, the summary of the Articles of Agreement. What's been proposed, many of us know that the current formula for how we pay to be part of the, send our children to the tech school, is complicated beyond measure. This is an effort to simplify the formula and take a better snapshot of what the district, our district and the other participating districts are actually making use of the tech school. So the idea is, they took the... So the idea, uh, is they took the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen percentages that we are currently paying and kind of froze them, uh, which means Neshamenee is currently at a twenty-one point nineteen percent. That's our share of the total budget. That will also, as proposed, be a reflection of the number of students, our percentage of students that we would be allotted. The idea being that, oh, um, they'll be very close to what we are currently sending and that as, uh, changes occur, try and keep it in place with, I said, our actual usage of the tech school. The plan is to keep them consistent for three years and they will be recalculated every three years. And, uh, any changes from that point are still going to be capped at a plus or minus one percent. So it's not a drastic change. That, uh, that allows students to attend districts that, uh, utilize the tech school the most without additional costs. The, um, there's some change, argument over the capital reserve, change in debt service formula that, um, you know, we alluded to before, but, uh, what has been agreed upon more or less is the, the change in the operating budget that affects us the most. And I will add that when we make a decision on that, the length of agreement would end till June thirtieth, twenty-one, twenty-one. Thank you.
Any other comments? That brings us to the second period of public comment. Anyone want to approach the podium?
Suzy Drake, Neshamenee High School teacher, um, advisor, all that stuff. Uh, I just want to shout out to, uh, former Neshamenee Scott Talent winner, Katie with a C. Um, if you watched Neshamenee Idol, or, sorry, we had Neshamenee Idol. We had that before we changed it to Neshamenee Scott Talent. If you watched American Idol the other day, our Katie made it all the way through to the Hollywood round. So kudos to her. She's awesome. Her mom posted the YouTube video of her song, so please look at that. Girls' basketball just, uh, won in the Sweet Sixteen. I just looked at it. It was literally posted fourteen minutes ago and I already forget the score. I just know we won. So, and boys are playing tomorrow, so our kids are phenomenal. And I've said as a taxpayer and aunt of a kid in the, uh, Bucks program, yeah, my niece was in France last year. Part of the reason why she's always been beyond the high school kids. She was over them in sixth grade. So the Bucks program has worked beautifully for her. She loves it. She loves the freedom. I mean, she loves being able to come home because they're on spring break and watch a movie, you know, instead of sitting in school just staring at a wall. So, I mean, there are excellent, um, advantages, but it's also the, the opportunity for the kids to have that sense of freedom with the protection from home. So, I mean, the union leader in me has different things, but from the taxpayer aunt perspective, you know, kid perspective, it is definitely a worthwhile program. So thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone want to suggest? We're not giving them out tonight. Had to have three speakers to do that. Anyone want to suggest future topics? That brings us to board comment.
Uh, I would just like to thank Brian and Gina. What a fantastic credit they are to the community. Not the least of which is coming before the podium and speaking in front of strangers. That's fantastic. You know, as I was describing their experience, I was thinking of myself graduating from a small high school, Bishop Beegan, relatively small, and, uh, walking into Temple University in my first lecture hall and not to mention getting a train, going downtown, walking down at the time, I couldn't get off at Temple Station. I had to walk down North Broad, um, just being so completely overwhelmed. And, uh, I just think the fact that they could get their foot in the door, um, a, and get a feel for how it's going to go for them next year, uh, when they leave, as they said, somewhat the security of the high school environment, um, that's just fantastic. Uh, I really wish I'd had that program. I might have lasted at Temple a little longer. Thank you.
I just wanted to, um, congratulate Katie Taylor, uh, Neshamenee Senior. She did make it through American Idol's audition. She will be going to Hollywood and performing, so I just wanted to wish her well and encourage the entire Neshamenee community to also support her in the voting when she does, um, perform. So please check social media. I'm sure her performance dates when she will be on TV will be announced and, uh, so proud of her. But, uh, congratulations, Katie.
I also want to congratulate Katie as well. I, I am not an American Idol watcher. I never watched the program, but when my daughter and my wife came and said, "Turn it on. Neshamenee kids on, gonna be on." We all sat down and watched it and, uh, it, I just had one response. It was just beautiful. She did such a great job. It was, it was, it was unbelievable. And it goes to what John was saying about the other two students about how you present yourself, how you feel comfortable in front of other people. It's just testament, you know, first to her family, how she was raised and, and hopefully the school system that she came from helped her, helped her along the way. But it was, it was just remarkable and what a great thing happened for a kid. I mean, that's just, just fantastic. Gina and Brian, as, as everyone else has mentioned, uh, she, for a girl who says, "I can't speak in public," I mean, she did pretty good. She, she, she did pretty good and, and, uh, you know, both very accomplished. They seem very determined, uh, you know, the only good things a, ahead for, for them, you know, with that attitude. Uh, the Bucks County and the Shaminie Partnership, uh, you know, that's, all the credit goes to, uh, you know, Mr. Jones for, for bringing it here, you know, and expanding it. And the work that, you know, the administrators, you know, Mr. Jeanette and of course, Dr. McGee, do with the high school to maintain it is just over and above. I mean, um, you know, this is just a real pilot program that, um, you know, Joe convinced us, we need to do this. Like, I can be honest to tell you that not everybody was a hundred percent in sync with so many other things that we have going on. But, uh, this is what we're supposed to be doing. We're, you know, we're just not responsible to, to, you know, give them the, uh, you know, the, the, you know, the ABCs and we got to find a way for, for kids today. This world is different. They have to be able to move into the world and not every kid needs to go to college. But for those kids that, that are this determined and they're going to take on this extra load of work, to provide them that introduction, I think is well worth it and well, uh, well spent and, and what an asset to the community. Now honestly, I have to say is I've had some, you know, people contact me about this program and felt that, you know, um, we shouldn't be spending, you know, this extra revenue to do this, that, um, you know, I had to pay, you know, my own kids to go to college. Well, we're not affording kids a college education. You know, we're just trying to afford them a way to get an introduction to college, gain some additional credits that can help them along the way. And we're meeting the needs of these children that want to seek this. So, um, I think it's some of the, you know, and it's really not, you know, that expensive when you look at, uh, what we spend for some other programs. So I, I'm really happy that we did this and I'm happy that the kids and, and the administration's doing such a great job with it and, uh, I only hope that it, um, that it grows. Uh, to our support staff in this winter storm, guys did a great job. Uh, it was a mess everywhere. They got the schools cleaned up. It's just, just a great job, uh, done by all. Um, last thing I want to speak about, and Gina had brought this up during her, her conversation, you know, about how expensive it is to go to college and, uh, the scholarships that are available. So I don't know if the, the public at large is aware, but, um, Neshamenee offers many, many scholarships through the guidance department. The list is over thirty different scholarships that are available. Uh, there's some of them that are as high as, you know, a full boat and some that, you know, just pa, help pay for books and, and supplies. But it's, it's a real opportunity for kids that are, are college-bound, um, to look to the guidance department to find out what scholarships are available, what the conditions are, and apply for them. There's, there's a, a, a ton available. You know, most of them, uh, are in memorial for someone, um, uh, but there's some that are just sponsored by, 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 by groups. This year, uh, you know, my family, uh, has contributed to that. Uh, we have started a scholarship fund in memory of my son. Uh, we're going to be able to sponsor, uh, two scholarships this year. Excuse me. Two scholarships this year for engineering students. And we're going to be able to sponsor, sponsor, uh, one through the Athletic Association in Lower Southampton. And it's, uh, all due to the generosity of the community and, uh, we appreciate it. And, uh, I, uh, feel grateful that there will be someone that, uh, can take advantage of it. So thank you very much.
Without necessarily parroting what, uh, my colleagues have already said, uh, in regard to Brian and Gina and, uh, and Katie and, uh, the women's basketball, uh, team, girls' basketball team, sorry. Uh, I, I just think, uh, this is, this is what, uh, really charged, fuels me. And, uh, this is why I come out here. This is why I, I, I want to be part of this. For everyone who's, who's here, this is a, we're, I, I think we're more than just a school district. I think, uh, what you heard tonight is really testament to the fact that we're an incubator for innovation and, and talent. Uh, and, and we, we have a lot to contribute. So whether you're on the support staff or you're a teacher, an educator, or an administrator, or, or you're one of the, the nine of us on the board, um, I think it's something to really be proud of. It's, it's really awe-inspiring, so, uh, it's, it's an honor to be part of this.
The only thing I would like to add to what everyone has said tonight was, uh, that last Friday night over in the Maple Point Gym, um, some teachers, administrators and a lot of students participated in Coaches Against Cancer, and I know they raised fifteen thousand dollars. So, uh, kudos to them. That being said, I'll make a-
Nobody commented on gym night.
Here, I'll, let me, let me, let me say, because again, Dr. McGee, his staff, the, the adults, uh, in our system, uh, that was a tough, tough call Friday to, to try to decide, you know, do you push that or you try to hold it? If you remember, Friday was the, the first of the, the two northe, New Easters. And, uh, and a late call, tried to hold on to it and eventually the people losing electricity already, so we didn't want to have a gym with, uh, the electricity going out. Moving that event to Saturday and Sunday is not simple, as you can imagine. Went off without a hitch. Kids had a wonderful time, two sessions on Saturday, one on Sunday. And, uh, when you're out there watching, uh, the camaraderie, the, the sense of history associated with that event, I'm so glad you said that, Mr. Allen. Thanks so much. Uh, and the high school deserves all the credit. And the kids who, you, you talk about innovation, you talk about, um, opportunities for, for kids to have different types of experiences. That gym night, we probably don't recognize enough of what it does for students in terms of their own voice, taking leadership, uh, coordination, teamwork, all the things that companies are looking for when they're hiring. That gym night really provides a lot. We, we probably accomplish as much in gym night as we do in some of our classrooms and, and it's, it's all student-led. Great opportunity, great, great chance to spotlight them. Thank you so much.
Make a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Opposed? Meeting's adjourned.